Call the May sixteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Surrey County Board of Commissioners to order. And at this time, we'll have invocation and pleas of allegiance by Vice Chairman Eddie Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather here to do the people's business tonight. We pray for wisdom, we pray for guidance and mercy, dear Lord. We ask for you to help us do the things that our citizens would have have us do in your will. We ask for the citizen, for you to look over the citizens of Surrey County. We ask for the peace in our world and peace in Ukraine. We pray for all of our armed services, our law enforcement, dear Lord. We pray for this board. We pray for our county and our nation. We ask these things in your name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
All right, looking for approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tucker. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Approval of the May second, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two meeting minutes. Do I have a motion? Motion, Mr. Chairman. Motion by Commissioner Marion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Harris. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And ayes have it. The consent agenda, I'll turn that over to our county manager, Chris Knopf.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item will be tax department end of month summaries, charges and reports for the board's approval. Secondly, the sheriff's office request to transfer existing funds to replace two ATVs. Two requests from HR for position reclassification and creation. A permit fee waiver request on behalf of the Surrey Baptist Association from the inspections Department. And two budget amendments from Finance, number nine and number ten for the fiscal year. These address special taxing district revenues as well as revenues for the volunteer fire departments, salary and insurance lines. And there is no increased fund balance for these changes. And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a motion? Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman. Motion to approve by Commissioner Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Marion. Any discussion? All in favor, please, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. All right, this time, we have some folks on election integrity. I've laid down a few ground rules. We're going to give speaking time of an hour. That is for three people, I've been told. And we will take no questions or comments from the audience. It'll be these three people to present in that hour. That will be an hour of speaking time. We will not charge for transition time sitting up for a show or whatever, a slideshow. So at this time, Mark Cook is a... All right, Professor David Clements.
I was just gonna propose that I give you an outline for tonight, just for a few minutes, and then I'll sit down and Mark, Mr. Cook will be here. I'm a former law professor and prosecutor. And I've had over a thousand evidentiary hearings on evidence. One of the reasons why this room is packed is because, like many, November third, twenty twenty, just didn't make sense. And we're going to try to make sense of that. And I want to plant the seed because the question that you have to have for yourselves is what authority do we have to do anything? Right? Have to ask that question. So I want to draw your attention to a particular North Carolina statute, one-six-three dash one-six-five-point-eight. And this is going to be relevant for what's going to be put forth for you today. To paraphrase, the Board of County Commissioners has the ability to decline to adopt certain voting machines. And after tonight's presentation, we hope that you will hear your constituents out and their concerns on massive vulnerabilities that can be found in the ESNS machines, which are, I believe, what you use in this county. The other question that you're going to have to wrestle with is your jurisdiction. You see the state election board, county election board, and you all have concurrent jurisdiction. You all have different powers to check and balance one another. But at the end of the day, it's the county that issues that certificate for your, your local elections, which means you're certifying something. You're making a statement that what happens in Surrey County is trustworthy. So I want to be here as a resource to y'all, answer whatever questions you have. But we're gonna send it over to our hardware, IT, cybersecurity expert right now, and I'll join you in the future. Okay? Thank you.
Commissioners, thanks for having me. I appreciate it. So I'll give you a little bit of background. First of all, my name is Mark Cook. I've been in IT and cybersecurity since I was a little kid, about eleven years old, I started writing software. And far before the internet existed, I was writing the equivalent of a search engine back in the CompuServe and Prodigy days. And AOL, you guys probably all remember that. And I've been doing this a long time. And I started an IT company back then. And the purpose of my IT company was to provide contracted IT staff to small, medium businesses, and even individuals at their home to make sure that their systems are secure and that they operate properly. And back in the day, there weren't viruses. We didn't have anything like that. We were lucky if we could connect our modem to another system and transmit an email. And then with the advent of more technology and more people using this technology, all of a sudden, some bad actors started showing up. And we started seeing scams online. We saw viruses, malware. And now it's everywhere in every system that we use. Every single computer system anywhere has been attacked and hacked, no matter how secure the thing is. Sir, Department of Defense, Pentagon, Facebook, Google, banks, they've all been hacked. Every single one of them have over the years. And they tell us everything's perfectly secure. And then a few months later, all of a sudden, there's massive hack. You know, heard about the SolarWinds hack a little while ago. And that, if you guys are familiar with SolarWinds, they're a company that make a security product to help secure networks and monitor networks. And that company was able to be hacked. Someone had got into them. They embedded a virus inside one of their programs that SolarWinds then packaged up and distributed to their customers. So it wasn't even SolarWinds directly. It was an indirect hack because it was a high-value target. They thought, well, if we can get into this SolarWinds software, the company will distribute it for us. And all of a sudden, they were embedded everywhere. And they were trapped in these networks for months, up to a year, before even one person knew about it. And then all of a sudden, they started realizing, our systems have been hacked months and months and months ago, and we didn't even know it. What have they done? What have they got access to? When one system gets hacked like that, they can put on any number of other viruses or malware into that system. So it's not the original hack that's the problem necessarily. It's what happens after that. Once they've taken control of the system, you can do anything you want, once you got a foot in the door. And this is a company whose job was to secure networks. If our Pentagon can't secure their network, our Department of Defense can't secure their network, Department of Homeland Security can't secure networks. Are we really so foolish to think the only system that is completely impervious to any cyber hack is our voting system? I mean, you know, maybe our DOD should be using our voting system companies to secure their networks. It, it's absurd. It's absolutely absurd. And those hacks can come in a number of ways. You know, these are outside actors that come in and create viruses and malware for systems. But what happens if you have a bad actor and they're actually a developer that works at one of these companies that writes the software? Someone on the inside. They could get away with anything they wanted, and no one would know the difference unless they just happened to catch it. And some of these systems have millions of lines of software code. It's called source code. One voting system vendor, four million lines of code in their voting system software that counts dots on a piece of paper. Four million lines. And you could change any one of those lines and make the software do anything you want it to. Programmers can program a system to do whatever they want it to do. They could program a system to give you the exact result they want you to see. And then turn around and do something completely different as soon as you feed it a little bit different information. It'd be trivial to do that. You could have a system that you fed it, and I'll put this in terms of ballots. You, you could feed it a hundred ballots, and let's say if it only got a hundred ballots at a time, it ran one part of the code. But then as soon as you give it, let's say eight hundred ballots or a thousand ballots, it could start shifting and run a different piece of the code in there. So just because you feed it one piece of data and you get this particular output on it, doesn't mean you'll always get that. It can do whatever it wants. Do you know how your phones work or how your computers work? I mean, we turn them on and we expect them to do something, but sometimes they do something we don't expect them to do. Even though they've done the same thing over and over and over again, every single day, all of a sudden, that one time, you turn it on and the mouse just freezes. And you can't get it to do anything. So a lot of people fall into the misconception that if you see a computer do one thing one way, it's always going to do that one thing the same way. That's just not how it works. And someone that happened to be malicious could easily embed something in anything to do that. It could be a, a vendor of one of these companies that inserts something in. I'll give you an example. These voting system, they use commercial off-the-shelf hardware, like Dell computers, stuff you could, not all Dell, but some of them are Dell. You could buy this stuff off the shelf. You put their software on it, and then boom, there you go. You've got a voting system. So for instance, you have scanners on a lot of these systems, especially that tabulate ballots. Okay, these scanners aren't made necessarily by the voting system company. These scanners are scanners that they purchase from some company. And then those scanners have to what's, have what's called a software driver. You guys probably all heard of drivers. When you install a printer, you have to have a printer driver. Scanners need scanner drivers. They're the software code that allows the scanner to talk to the computer. Likewise, a printer driver allows the printer to talk to the computer and, and back and forth. So if someone were to realize that these voting system companies happen to use a particular scanner, they could actually do a little side channel attack, attack this completely other innocent company, embed a little piece of code in their software, just like happened with SolarWinds. And all of a sudden, that software gets installed as a software driver on the voting system, and the whole thing is hacked. You have supply chain issues. A lot of this hardware comes from China. Okay, so we all of a sudden are getting equipment from a place that we can't even trust what happens to it. And when you can have a modem or a wireless device or something that sends data out to an IP address somewhere on the internet, the size of a pinky nail, and you can hide that underneath another chip, so you would never see it. It's very simple to do it for these companies, and they do it all the time. They've done it before. And nothing would stop them from doing it. And I'll bet every single person up here, probably every person in this room, could sit and look at a motherboard and not point out the modem chip on it, because I'll bet no one knows what one looks like. And I guarantee the election officials and clerks that are responsible for upholding their duties that they're sworn by law to uphold can't even do their job because they don't know enough about these systems. These are black boxes to them. That's one of the biggest problems. They are vulnerable in every aspect, from the very equipment that goes on the boards that are assembled and then shipped in to all the software that is then put on them. You could have a perfectly good system from the start and then install an update. And that update, let's say a virus definition update, could change the way the system works. You could write some code in there that looks for a particular indicator on a ballot even. And you're feeding these ballots through, and the system works perfectly, and all of a sudden, it sees a dot in a special area or some encoded information in it, and it can behave totally differently. The problem is, these things are absolute black boxes. And the citizens have no idea how they work. The election officials have no idea how they work. And then the voting system vendors, when you ask them, can we see the source code? I'd like to see exactly how every part of this system works. They don't give it to you. Or they say it's an escrow and you can't get, you can't access it. And who here can read millions of lines of source code? Who here can read twenty lines of source code? What election official do we have in the United States that could sit there and read a few lines of source code and know what the source code does? They're so far removed from it, they can't even do their job. We're counting dots on a piece of paper. Now, I've solved a lot of problems with technology, being in the business I'm in. Customers have issues in their companies. They have inefficiencies. I come in there and say, okay, well, this software and this hardware combination will make this work better for your company. This can make you more efficient. This will make things less air prone. And we can solve problems with that. And I saw, I've been doing it from the beginning. I've written software that does it from the beginning. And I would love to solve every problem with technology and with computers, because I think they're, they're fun, and you can do a lot of really interesting things with them. But here's the problem with that. There is too much room for error and abuse in these systems. That is the issue. In this circumstance, I would love to come up with some type of blockchain idea or some super-secure way to fix the election system. But when it comes down to it, no matter which way, we try to fix it. The problem is, you add complexity to it and you add and lack of transparency to the people, the very people that are responsible for using these systems and administering these systems and the people voting. If a person that's voting doesn't understand how the system works, that's counting their vote fully and can't see every aspect of it, they have no trust in the system. And if I was an election official, I could never certify a system that I don't know for absolutely sure is doing what it's supposed to do. There's no way I could do that, in good conscience. We're counting dots on a piece of paper. We have the most high-value target in the world, which is our election system. The leader of the free world is chosen here. The people that teach our children, spend hours and hours every day with our children, is chosen here. We have a duty to ensure our freedoms, and the only thing that gives us our freedoms is our vote. And if we can't ensure one hundred percent the integrity of our vote, we will end up giving our freedoms away and will give our country away. And that, that's the biggest problem right there. You know, I'm not here with any ulterior motive. I'm here as an expert in this field that have been doing this for over thirty-five years, that solve a lot of problems with computers. We cannot, as citizens, trust any system that removes the voter from our election system in any aspect. We have our voter registration databases. That everyone knows that's where, if you're registered to vote, you go up in this database. Well, that's often the cloud now. And a few corporations have control of that, but the citizens in most cases do not anymore. In fact, some of the states don't even have control of it. It's these cloud companies, these huge corporations that are now selling access to these databases. And clerks can't control this. Clerks don't even, they barely know how to log into it. So how are they going to do their job as a clerk? Then you have the poll books, which are electronic now, all connected to the cloud. And someone comes in to vote, they check this poll book. Well, they don't have access to really what's going on in the poll book either. So the poll book system, the system that tells them if they can give you a ballot or not, that's been removed now from the citizen. So now that's off in the cloud or in a corporation's hands. The tabulation systems that are supposed to count our votes, well, that's in a corporation's hands also. That's not in the citizen's hands. That's not in the election official's hands. The election officials don't even know how to program these systems. They've got to contact the vendor to program the systems for them. They don't even know how to program the ballot definitions, but the vendor makes it very easy. We'll do it for you. Okay, there's even a company that mails, they'll print the ballots, they'll mail the ballots out. The ballots will come back to them. They handle the whole thing. Don't worry about it, election officials. We'll do your job for you, because it's too complicated for you. We'll handle it. So there's a corporation that takes care of all that, a couple of them. Then the reporting system. What happens when the election officials upload their results while they're, during the tabulation or at the election time? They upload it to what's called election night reporting systems. In most cases, it goes out to a company called Cytl and Clarity. This company, and it's the, they've changed names a couple of times, and there are two different companies. And, and their coordination financially is kind of interesting if you look into them. It's S-C-Y-T-L, and Clarity is C-L-A-R-I-T-Y. But they upload the results to Cytl and Clarity. Now, a lot of these election officials I've talked to think they're uploading it to their state. So I say, okay, well, show me what you're doing. Show me the link. They pull up the link. They say, yeah, click here, see, it says... And I'm just going to give an example. I don't know what state. We'll say it says Montana. Let me give you one actually that is legitimate, South Carolina. It's kind of close to here, I think. So they say it says South Carolina on it. But after that, if you look at it closely, you can see in the URL, it's actually Cytl and Clarity. And in some cases, it doesn't even show it. It actually shows full South Carolina, like it did in Colorado. But if you look at the source code for the webpage, which you can do on any webpage, right-click any webpage in the blank area and go down to where it says view source code. And it's going to pull up a whole bunch of garbage. But in there, you can actually see where it's really pulling the data from on the webpage. It's this company Cytl and Clarity. It's a corporation that we've outsourced our, the reporting of our results to now. Now, in some cases, some states have an internal system that they handle, but a lot of them have outsourced to this. Then what happens to your vote? Does anyone know what happens after your election official uploads the votes? How does it end up on the TV screen later? Yeah? How do we not know this? How is this not common knowledge to us as citizens? We don't know. A lot, most people in here don't know what happens after they drop their ballot off. They don't know how they drop a ballot off, and then the number shows up on NBC later. And you guys probably don't know either. And I've been asking for months trying to figure this out, a year and a half, actually. So it goes through Cytl and Clarity. And some of the private systems, I think those get uploaded as well, but it's, it's very obfuscated from the rest of us and goes to a company called Edison Research, which does polls. And then Edison, with their polling data, as I understand it from the research I've done, because they won't talk to us either. They won't respond to an email. They take their polling data and they blend it with the data that is being uploaded by the election night reporting system. And what we see in the very beginning on the TV, in the, what I call the election pageant that they put on for us, is we see the poll numbers, what they think they're going to see, but all from their polling data. And then they start blending in the real data until hopefully at the end, it's only the real data. But is it? We don't know, because we don't have access to that either. So what, what part of the system do the citizens actually have access to? None. We don't have access to the registration systems. Corporations own them. Poll books, corporations. Voting systems, tabulation systems, corporations. Reporting system, corporations. The citizens have completely lost access and visibility to our systems that control every aspect of our lives. And once we give it away, we won't get it back entirely. We are right on the verge of losing complete control of it. Now, it's a simple solution. All we have to do is reverse what's happened over the past over twenty years. Sadly, it's been decades and decades it's been going on. Write down vote scam for me. V-O-T-E-S-C-A-M. Look up that book. You can find it on Amazon. It's like three dollars for the electronic version. It's a very interesting read. It is written by the Call Your Brothers in the nineteen nineties when they had uncovered massive problems. I hate to say it, and I don't want to be one of these labeled conspiracy theorists, but this has been going on a very long time. They talked about it in their book. They tried very hard to get people to listen, and they ran into the same problems. What we're seeing today in two thousand twenty, twenty-two, it's the same stuff they're talking about in the nineties. This stuff's been going on a long time. And, and we all know there's been some issues with elections over the years. We have to, as Americans, do something about it. We can't keep letting this happen to us. There is no reason why our election system shouldn't be one hundred percent transparent and one hundred percent understandable by every American citizen that is voting. There should be no part of this that's a mystery to anyone. We can't fix this from the top down. This has to be done from the bottom up. It has to be done by our local citizens. You guys are the citizens' last hopes, and I say this to, you know, commissioners all over, election officials. We have to stand together as citizens of this country. And everyone's got to decide, what are we going to let happen to our country? Are we going to make it stand and make a change to absolutely ensure without any question that our votes count? So how do we do it? Very simple. We're counting dots on a piece of paper. We used to do this before computers somehow, right? Okay. Precinct level voting with anti-counterfeit paper, so people can't throw a ballot in a copy machine and copy it, right? Very simple. Your twenty-dollar bill in your wallet has more anti-counterfeit measures than our ballot paper does. What's worth more? It, it's absurd, and we have companies that'll do this already for very inexpensive, twenty-five cents a page. I mean, even if it was a dollar page, it wouldn't matter if we want to make sure that, that it's integral. We got to clean up our voter rolls. We vote at our precinct and we count at our precinct with our fellow neighbors, right? We have bipartisan teams. We have a judge. We do exactly what we used to do. We do what a lot of counties in the United States are still doing to this day. There are a lot of counties doing hand counts right now. And I guarantee those election officials, when they finish doing their hand counts, they can tell their citizens and know one hundred percent that they can certify that election in their heart because they know it was done right, because they could see every bar, every pit of it. And every citizen that wanted to be a part of it, they can be a part of it. So we ask, well, how do we afford to do this? Well, how many hundreds of millions of dollars do these voting systems cost us? And where's all this tax money going? It's going to these corporations. So why don't we take that money and put it right back into our own citizens? Why don't we pay our citizens a really fair hourly rate to count our votes? Every ballot should be available publicly. There's nothing identifiable on a ballot. You can't find out who voted on a ballot. Every one of those, as soon as they come in the door, and this is one area where technology could help, which is to provide transparency, not complexity. Cop, every ballot gets scanned. This is just one of my ideas. You put it in a publicly accessible place that everyone can see. You take all your tally sheets, and that all gets scanned as well. The entire tabulation process gets videotaped and video recorded, so everyone can see it. The audit is actually built into the tabulation process. Okay? And then the election's over, you get your totals, all the precincts send their totals. They post them on the wall. They send their totals to the county. The county posts all the precinct totals on the wall, public library, county building, whatever, out in the open. And on the website and anyone can walk down to the building, look at the numbers, check the website, yep, they're the same. Okay, total transparency, complete confidence. And the numbers just float up to the top. It's, we're just adding numbers up. It's, it's not complicated at all. And then here's the nice thing about that. If anyone has a question about the election at all. Well, it's all right there. No one has to fight over, let me see the ballots. No one has to fight over, let me see the data. It's all right there. So here's what I want to do. I want to see Mrs. Smith's sixth grade class get a lesson in civics. And I want them to have a little class project. Count your precinct's ballots. So if we have our elementary school kids now learning to count their own ballots. And then they do it in high school and they do it from time to time. All of a sudden, they'll learn a little bit about how our government works. And guess what? By the time they're voting, they'll already have done this four or five times over. So there's no question about training anyone. Every single person that graduates high school will already know how to tabulate an election. It'll be second nature to them. And then the whole thing is totally transparent, it's out in the open, there's no questions. I don't see why we aren't doing this. It's so simple. And then these corporations aren't going to like it very much because they make hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars, if not billions of dollars on all of us. But at what expense really? Our freedoms. So please, I beg of you. Do what you feel in your heart is the right thing. And let's help ensure the integrity of our elections and our freedoms for our children and our grandchildren and their children. Because we are going to lose the option to do it very soon. Time is of the essence, please do it. And if you guys have any questions for me, please shoot any question you've got at me. I'm happy to answer anything I can for you. Okay, and I'm happy to leave my information if you want to call me later and have any questions. By all means, call me 24/7. I'm here to help, I want to be a resource to you. I love this country, I love all my citizens. Uh, I hope someday to be, you know, in a, a position, I now want to run for office someday. I, I really do because I want to do my civic duty and, and I want to help this whole thing happen as well. So please help make that happen. Thank you.
Chairman Goins, commissioners, it's an honor to be back up here again. I'm John Boz, 804-432-1233. As soon as we get that slide up there, I'm presenting Surrey County Preliminary Canvassing Results Preliminary because we're not finished. But what I wanted to start with is I wanted to acknowledge those individuals that are in this room that have spent the last six weeks going door to door in Surrey County as part of this canvassing efforts. Would you please stand up? Working with some excellent individuals. So as an overview, because that's what this is, it's an overview because I'm going to be fast so we can get the professor up here. We started canvassing in April 2nd. We canvassed until last Saturday, May 14th. So about six weeks and we accomplished a lot in six weeks. Our canvas teams are volunteers of two to three individuals that go out in canvas in Surrey County. Our interviews is what we're calling them, we're calling them interviews. What that basically amounts to is we go up to the door, we introduce ourselves to the resident, to the citizen. And we, uh, we say that we would like to offer them a flyer that tells them how to check their 2020 vote themselves. And to see the method of voting that they used. And they're all very excited about that because they didn't even understand that they could do that. And then we, we tell them that we have publicly available data from the North Carolina voter rolls in our hand for their address. And we would love for them to take a look at it and verify that what North Carolina has on the voter rolls is what they know to be happening in their household. And that's where we find a lot of very interesting things that I'm going to share with you today. So let's get started. Next slide, yeah, of course, I have control of that. So we visited 525 homes. We interviewed 417 people. The difference there is because some people didn't answer the door. And we found 170 issues that are really considered red flags. And let's go over those red flag issues, next slide, please. Sorry, I really, I really do like saying that. Okay. So, uh, what I would like for you, how I'd like you to view this slide initially is that the largest bar, the 81, we're going to call that banked fraud. And the other categories, we're going to call that obvious and deliberate fraud because that's exactly what it is. So let's talk about the banked fraud, ghost registrations. What does that mean? It means our voter rolls are a complete and total mess. With the small subset of people that we talked to having 81 voters that are listed at a particular residence that don't live there. And in many cases, haven't lived there for years and they are still on the voter rolls. And the resident is standing there going, saying, they don't live here, I don't know them. Or they were former residents or they were former owners years ago. That is an eye opener to a potential fraudulent situation, depending on how you want to use those voters in the future. And obviously, there's a lot more than 81. So let's go to the next very interesting category, ineligible ballots. Here's where we just have flat out deliberate fraud. So these 52 ineligible ballots are, are basically in three subcategories. They are from a previous owner or former resident that voted in the 2020 election from that address. Or they're unknown, they're an unknown person that never lived at that address that also voted. Or they're an ineligible absentee by mail, by mail ballot. Let me give you some specific examples from our canvassing. Number one example from Walkbook 76, top seven. Person sells her home and moves to Wilkes-Barre, but cast a ballot in Surrey County. New homeowner states the former owner didn't live there during the time of the election. The home sold on the 3rd of September of 2020. Truth Finder shows the person that moved out's location is in Wilkes-Barre on September 1st of 2020, all the way up until the election, but they voted at that resident, residents in Surrey County. Uh, that's one, one example, let's go to the next one. Never lived there. Example from one of our Walkbooks 38, stop four. Two extra people are registered and vote from an address in Dobson. Current residents have lived there since 2018, but don't know who these two people are. One of the unknown voted absentee by mail. The other person supposedly voted early at a one-stop location. And Truth Finder shows she has lived in Georgia since 2007. It's very interesting stuff, isn't it? Let's do another one. Ineligible absentee by mail. People move out of the state, state or the county prior to the election day, but they're still registered in Surrey County with their old address. But they have their ballot sent to the new place of residence. An example is from another one of our Walkbooks. Husband and wife in Pilot Mountain filled out a change of address card for Colorado Springs. Colorado, to begin on June 1st of 2020. Truth Finder reports that this as their new address beginning June 1st of 2020. The absentee ballots were mailed to that address in Colorado Springs. Zillow shows the Surrey address from which they moved was a rental home. And the new renters moved in on July 28th of 2020. Yet the individuals in Colorado voted as a Surrey County voter. Yes, absolutely. All right, let's move on to our next category, which is incorrect voting method. Uh, incorrect voting method there, as an overview of a voting method is, I voted in person. I voted early or I voted by mail. Those are all voting methods. So what we had is 18 of those from our, from our, our sampling here. And I'll give you an example. The voter history record shows the people voted by mail. The people voted by mail, but when interviewing the people, they say they voted in person. Walkbook 38, stop eight. Voter in Dobson states he voted early in person at a one-stop site, but the records show he voted by mail. So we had 18 of those where the resident just flat out told us, that's not how I voted. I didn't vote by mail, I voted in person. And they're not very happy about that when they see that. They actually get angry and irritated that what they did is not what they're seeing. All right. Vacant lot, well, that's, that's obvious. Uh, I've got an example for that, too. Walkbook 72, stop nine. Two people are registered as living at a vacant lot in Mount Airy. Canvassers review the property and confirm it's vacant. Zillow listed as a vacant lot. Truth Finder shows that voters actually have lived in Cana, Virginia since 2014. Both voted early at a one-stop location in Surrey County. And I personally found one just the other day, a mailbox that was listing at about 30, 30 degrees. About ready to fall down rotten, paint removed on, on Park Drive. And there's a river on one side, can't possibly be a house in the river. And on the other side, there's a steep hill, heavily forested, no, no homes, nothing. But yet two votes came from that mailbox. So, and I'm, I'm sure there's more, as you might imagine. Okay, in the last category, lost ballots, added ballots. Surrey County residents say they voted, but no ballot was recorded for them. My wife is one of those sitting right over here right now. Or they didn't vote, but a vote was cast for them. So you can imagine, imagine the residents when we say, yeah, basically you voted. No, I didn't. Well, it says here you did. Boy, talk about some irritation with that one. So in summary, 170 issues from 417 interviews in only six weeks. Surrey County is not immune to problems. I've heard some people say that not here, not in Surrey County. Well, that's obviously not the case. And I would venture to say that we're going to find a lot more. So thank you for your time.
Folks, I've traveled to 33 states and I've given similar presentations about what I'm going to share with you. And I need that mouse from you, sir. In fact, I'm overseeing one of the only audits, full forensic audits in the country. And we chose Otero County, New Mexico. In part because it's a Republican county. And because we believe that the cheat is being deployed through machines, ballot boxes, you name it. And we were told, go ahead. Not in my county, not in Otero County where everyone's a registered Republican. Republicans rule in Otero. Well, we just finished our canvas. And I think the gentleman that you just heard from is on to something. We're seeing a percent control cheat. You see, we didn't just do 417 folks at 500 addresses. We did 20% of the entire county, which is 6,000 square miles. Thousands of addresses. And our breakdown was alarming in a Republican county. This was a fully county commission canvas. So we had the approval and we had a formal resolution where we worked with the county. 40% of our voter rolls are inaccurate, 40%. 2% are lost votes. Meaning Commissioner Tucker, if I were to come up to your home, I'd have the official voter rolls. And I'd ask you not who you voted for, but did you vote in November 3rd, 2020? And you would say, yes, I voted in person. And I would show you the voter rolls and in fact, there's not a recording of your vote cast. 2% of the folks, the thousands that we interviewed that happened to. 3% are the ghost voter phenomenon. Where if Commissioner Tucker has a, a person on the rolls here for his address, I'd say, hey, have you ever heard of a Juan Montoya? What have you? No, I've lived in my home for the past 30 years. That's, that's a typical answer. Well, we're finding that 3% of what we're finding, people don't live there, they've never lived there. Yet they cast a vote from that address. And it's percent control because what we saw is the first weekend that we went out canvassing, we canvassed 450 addresses. And we're thinking, this has got to be wrong, it's got to change over time. Well, we'd go out a second weekend, a third weekend, fourth weekend, fifth weekend, sixth weekend. Eight weekends, it never changed. And we also saw the same method of people swearing up and down, the way that I cast my vote was in person. And uniformly, 5% of those people that we canvassed, it was shifted and recorded as a mail-in vote. So 12% of the 40% appears to have digital manipulation. The canvas doesn't lie, folks. And we can't have a society where we can't reconcile the official voting records with what your constituents or what our constituents were saying in New Mexico. But how did we get here? So I'm going to play this video and remind you about how your constituents felt some time ago. So that's what most of your constituents recall on November 4th, when they woke up. Couldn't make sense of it. Into, from their intuition, they never experienced an election like that before. And the same thing happened with me. Yet there were many claims that were being made right from, right from the get-go. Safest and most secure election in history. We were told that over and over again, your devices don't hook up to the internet. You all use ESNS tabulators, machines, the DS 200 in particular. And we've been told that they do not hook up to the internet. Well, I want to give you some of the strong words of Dominion's President and CEO, John Paulos, because he made similar claims to what your representatives from ESNS are making. And let's see if they're trustworthy. I want to pause it really quick. Even though that's the gentleman from Dominion, that right there came up from an ESNS, DS 200. That is a motherboard with a TALIT chip modem affixed to it. The people in Antrim, Michigan were told their machines do not hook up to the internet. In Antrim County, there were 7,000 votes that were flipped in favor of Biden. That happened. So we're not talking about potential vulnerabilities that were mentioned by Mr. Cook. We're talking about real vulnerabilities that were exploited in the 2020 election. There are over 12,000 of these DS 200 machines that are being used in election. There are over 12,000 of these DS 200 machines that are being used in elections right now. Including Surrey County. So we're, we're put in the position that you have to be, you, we have to take their word for it. Your clerks will tell you they're not hooked to the internet. But ask them whether or not you can open the hood. Most of the designs with that, with the hardware have a socket design where as soon as you remove it. You can affix a, a wireless modem right there. It's a feature that's built in, built into these. Let's continue to listen though. This is the state of Georgia. They also use BS. All right. So for context, Mr. Paulus was actually giving testimony, sworn testimony before the Michigan Senate and he committed perjury. And the person that was contradicting him at every step of the way was his vice president, who's talking to potential clients like county clerks. Um, Eric Coomer. Eric Coomer is a member of Antifa. And was overheard saying that, don't worry about Trump winning the election. He made effing sure that it won't happen. Now that's Dominion in 28 states, but when you want to have a footprint across the country, you have to add Art Inner Civic and ESNS. The relevant point for all three machine providers is they all have the same vulnerable uh, points. When I went to uh, Idaho, did a similar presentation, we had ESNS's vice president there. You could see. The, the hardware and you also had USB slots where you can put in a USB chip modem. Once you can remote access these machines. Based on the software, you can do anything. And it's not about you can, things have happened. In fact, you have certification that came from Pro VNV in this jurisdiction. There's only two companies that do certifications. It's Pro VNV and SLI compliance. They certify. The machine in Antrim County, Michigan. They certify the one that did the 7,000 vote switch, switch. And I want to show you a video of a demonstration using that same type of hardware right now, about four minutes long. It gets worse. Many of these machines have features that are built in where they can wake up by themselves. And they can wake up by themselves without the screen turning on. So election workers wouldn't even know what was going on. The software that was there on that particular tabulator in Antrim County, again, we're dealing with Dominion and ESNS. Was certified by the same groups that certify your machines here. He didn't have to add anything. He actually found in the dropdown menu. The ability to do the very thing he just demonstrated on an election of seven ballots. And in reality, someone switched 7,000 votes in that election. Many of these hardware devices also have the ability to, under the pretext of helping people with disabilities. You can feed and scan, you're just supposed to scan these ballots. There are tools where they can actually fill out the ovals for unmarked parts of your ballot. And even more disturbing, they can do it where it doesn't even look machine filled out. It can look like a human filled it out. That's a touted feature. None of these features should exist on these machines at all, yet they're there and they can be done and they can be done remotely. If you have the proper credentials and passwords. You can do what Mr. Lindberg did. In another country across the world. Remote access is easy. Do we have any examples on a larger scale? I believe we do. How do I close this out? There we go. Is that it? So let's give you an example on a larger scale. That might not be enough for you. Patriots across the country have done screenshots. We actually have a library. Of screen captures like that in every state. We found them in the Gavin recall, uh, the Gavin Newsom recall in California. And that reeks of the machine manipulation. So how do you account for that? When you have 40,000 votes that are digitally added. You find curious surveillance footage like you do in Wayne County, Michigan where 3 o'clock in the morning. Security footage shows bands taking three dollies. Of tens of thousands of ballots be scanned through tabulators in the dark of night. Many of the folks here are familiar with the very famous video out of the State Farm building in Georgia. Ruby Freeman could see, be seen taking out. Ballots and re-scanning after Republican poll watchers were sent home under the pretext of a water main break. And it was in fact, a leaky toilet that was resolved 12 hours earlier. You also have the affidavits of truck drivers, one in particular that state, cross state lines from New York to Pennsylvania to do this because the mules. Ballot traffickers didn't stuff enough of these types of ballots in their backpack. Phenomenon that most of us are staying with the 2000 mules documentary, which appears to have election outcome significance. So no matter how you want to shake this, there is evidence everywhere. And the question is, should we have trust in the system? This is really the issue before you all. Is one, do you have the lawful authority? You do. Under 163-165.8, but it's a matter of public trust. And what I want to leave with you all is this isn't about. Your constituents convince, you know, having to convince you. It's actually your response to convince them that this is a trustworthy process. And I'm going to tell you right now, you've got your work cut out for you. I, I take no pleasure in telling you that, but I, I'm, the reason why I'm here is because, you know, as a guy that understands evidence, has tried cases, I've, I've have eight first degree murder convictions under my belt. I've taken down drug trafficking organizations and what I'm good at is seeing bad guys conceal evidence and destroy it to get away. And not face responsibility for their actions. And what we're seeing is a massive campaign. To suppress any alternative opinions on, you know, good luck trying to talk about this on YouTube. Good, good luck trying to talk about this on Facebook. We've all been censored. So it's, 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 this is the remedy, folks. It's, it's you all. And it's easier to have control over the process through a county commission. That answers to their constituents than trying to get all the Republicans or all the Democrats on one page legislature. Or with a magic lawsuit. That's what everyone tried to do when they were punting the ball to each other in November. The legislature didn't act when they saw this happen. And they said, courts, you decide. And the court said, no, this is a political question. You decide. Time ran out and then we had what happened on January 6th, which was the last recourse for us to have information. Well, folks, it's now May of 2022 and no one's moved on from this election. And they're not moving on. They're getting actually more angry as the evidence keeps coming out. And, and what we're going to ask you to do is not different. It, it's been done. Nye County, Nevada. Five of their county commissions heard from Mr. Cook. They highlighted all the different vulnerabilities of this system. And they unanimously voted, get rid of their election machines and they're going to paper. Likewise, in Esmeralda County, 3-0 unanimous decision. They're getting rid of their machines. They're going to paper. Rio Blanca County, Colorado, 2-1 decision. They're going to paper. Otero County, based on the intel that I have, they're going to go to paper. Just a matter of time. We basically had to give a presentation on our, our audit results to date and they're abysmal. Again, it's a red county and we all thought, not here, not in this place. Um, so it can be done. It has been done. And there's a few other things that I want to share with you that, that's important here. You have to look at your vote, the life cycle of your vote as a process. Just because you all show up and fill out a ballot and get a sticker that says I voted, that's not the way it really works. You have an input, you have input that most of us are familiar with where you walk into a voting center. Second input is your US Postal Service drop box. And then you have the third iteration. Courtesy of Mark Zuckerberg, reallocated $400 million to fundamentally change the way that we vote. Many of those drop boxes don't have security cameras. You have them in North Carolina. All right. That's shameful, yet they're there. But those are the three inputs. You walk in the door, usually have two lovely ladies that have those e-poll books. They just look like iPads. With, with voting, uh, voting information software. All of those are hooked to the internet. No one even disputes that. In fact, in most places, it's statutory requirement to have them hooked to the internet. Which makes them vulnerable because now you have a running list of who's shown up. And more importantly, who hasn't shown up. Where you might want to find a vote for that person. Permission to. Oh, oh, that's me. I can give myself permission. With your, with your permission, sir. May I continue? Okay. So this is alarming because what you're finding is in real life examples, New Mexico, for instance, we did the equivalent of FOIA. We wanted to request. Is poll data being delivered? And we found out that actual poll data from these poll pads were being run up from the county level. Uh, from the Secretary of State's office to candidates that were on the ballot. One in particular was a candidate Democrat operative that was running for County Clerk of Santa Fe. And at 8 o'clock, 11 o'clock, 12, 3, 312, 7 o'clock. She was getting full polling reports that come from these poll, these poll pads. she was getting full polling reports that come from these poll, these poll pads. And then we started looking at the digital record. And we saw in the digital record, just around those same times where she received that information, votes disappear and reappear in a different way. That's beyond a doubt. Now, did that happen here? I don't know. But it happened in New Mexico with these poll pads. You go through the life cycle, you get your ballot, you fill it out, and you feed it through those tabulators. We just showed you all kinds of video evidence where these are hooked up to the internet, have the chip modem wireless capabilities. These are designed to be vulnerable. But even if they weren't hooked to the internet, let's just take them at the word. You will retrieve an SD card from those machines. In Otero County, we have 40 of those tabulators. You take one of, one of, one of those SD cards, and you upload them into your election management system, which is just a computer that's networked, hooked to the internet. In our county, they destroyed those drives because the law said they didn't have to keep those. I can't reconcile that with the laws that I've read. But there's a lack of trust. At some point, as Mr. Cook mentioned, those results are uploaded to Sidle, and you see what you see on TV or on your Secretary of State website. So I'll leave you with this because of the time. I'm going to go back to the Bible. Our voice is the most precious piece of property that we have. It's more, it's more precious than money. Yet if you go to the scriptures and proverbs, you hear about how it's an abomination to the Lord to have inaccurate weights and measures. It's an abomination. It's detestable. What we're seeing are machines that we're being forced to use that can inaccurately weigh, shuffle, hide. And it's disgusting. As far as public trust, you don't have to take my word for it. In February of 2021, Rasmussen did a poll. About 45% of the country believed that the election was stolen. As more information leaked and dribbled through, that climbed up to 51%, then 53%, then 56%, then 60%. And that was before 2,000 mules. 85% of Republicans under Rasmussen's polling feel like there was serious problems. So the trust equation is not getting any better. More than 40% of Democrats feel the same way. And over 50% of independents feel that way. So the solution here is you all are going to feel a lot of pressure from legal, from your state election board, from the top down. And I pray that you're going to feel an equal amount of pressure, righteous pressure from your constituents. As someone who has been an award-winning law professor and award-winning prosecutor, this isn't about black letter law, folks. This is about courage. That's all this is about. I cannot guarantee that your, your choice or your vote will be easy. In fact, you will be attacked for it. I am no longer employed as a professor because I was fired for setting up for these issues. But it's important. So I'm not saying this as someone that says, I want to make your lives difficult. But we need heroes, and we need leaders in the fact. The fact that we're here because you all allowed this to happen, that's a rare thing. So I want to commend you for that. So we would formally request a vote. And perhaps you can hear from constituents. You don't, I don't live here. But I care enough about what's going on across the country to fly out here and tell you about what's going on in New Mexico, in Michigan, in Georgia. And these are red counties. And what we're finding is that this is an algorithm predetermined set point cheat. And what do I mean by that? You, if we ask for your cast vote records, chances are you're not giving them to us. Another country, and, and other states, they are public record. And there's a reason why they're not being given out. Because the cast vote record is your machines telling on themselves. And what I mean by that is everyone here's run for office, you've run a campaign, you've been polling. And when you run for office in Surrey County, you don't have to take a poll of everyone that lives here to get a sense of how Surrey County feels about something. There's this thing called the law of large numbers. And once you do a random poll, and you hit enough addresses, it starts to normalize and flatline. Well, we got the cast vote record in Pima County. And what we saw was shocking. Instead of it flatlining, the cast vote record shows a linear decline to a set point. Now let me, let me explain why that's significant. Not only does it violate the law of large numbers, which is impossible, the only way that it can make sense is that at a particular voting center where people cast vote, they cast their vote, that's the record. It's the order in which they cast that record. It would be the equivalent of having 2,000 Biden voters that happened to line up in a row to drive that to that set point. You know from your intuition that that's not how people vote. We've confirmed that in 12 other states with cast vote records from all those states. And that's why that, that record's being jealously guarded by folks here in North Carolina. Because it's conclusive proof of digital manipulation. And the canvas, the canvas confirms that. See, that's the beauty of the canvas. If we actually have the full records to do an audit, you don't have to have those, you have those issues resolved. So thank you for your time. This really is about public trust. And I don't know if there's a, there's a way to restore that at this point from what I've seen. But we do need heroes. We do need folks to lead the way, like Nye County, like Esmeralda County, like Otero County, like Surrey County. And the, and the vision that I want you all to see for yourself is this. Imagine elections in your county where you wake up in the morning, and you don't feel like anyone's chasing you. The legislatures, commissioners, the counselors, the judicial retention elections, you have trust. And maybe we don't solve all the issues across the country. But in this county, going forward, you're going to have trust on, on your leadership. And, and for the folks that are already on the ballot and might be worried, well, isn't this going to disturb me? Because I actually got in. So there might be a little bias, a little reluctance, because this threatens you. I'm of, I'm of the belief that you all did far better than the votes actually show. We're seeing skimming on a, on a massive level. So with that, God bless you all. Thank you for your time. And I pray that we will have accurate weights and measures here in Surrey County.
I appreciate all who have spoken this evening. Many have said, we just want to be heard, and we've given you that opportunity this evening. As we have also said many times over, we have opinions, questions, and thoughts about the election process. We have heard evidence and recommendations presented prior to this meeting and at our meeting this evening. I think it's incumbent on this board to look over what has been presented, to research, and ask questions about recommendation and issues that have been raised here this evening. As far as the evidence that would be credible, such as where people live or don't live, duplicate registrations, and other issues that have been raised in terms of future elections, you need, you need to forward those issues, concerns, and questions to our local Board of Elections and State Board for further review. This is an easy job. This is an easy job if you don't have to sit in one of these seats. This board doesn't always agree with each other. But on this issue, there is solidarity among the five members of this board. As we have referenced on several occasions, North Carolina General Statute 163 guides this board in what we can, what we can do in regards to elections is the law that governs elections in this state, until it is changed, is the law we go by. I've asked people, let me speak, please. I have, I have asked people in this room, have you read North Carolina General Statute 163? And they will say, no, but you can do this. How do you know if you haven't read it? There's much more that could be said. But I'll end with this. The Surrey County Board of Commissioners upholds the right of all citizens to participate in fair elections. And we want all of our citizens to participate in their sacred right to cast their vote and feel that it counts. Thank you for being here this evening. I'm looking for a motion to go to closed session to discuss personnel and economic development issues. I have a motion by Commissioner Tucker. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, say aye. Thank you.
Two items approved detention officers employees received this is a motion to approve detention officers employees receive overtime pay in lieu of comp time for May and June of 2022. That comes out of the sheriff's budget for the remainder of the year. I make it in a motion. Do I have a second?
Second, second.
Second by Commissioner Tucker. Any discussion? All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Ayes have it. Second motion is entered to a proposed agreement with Howard Jones for quasi judicial work with Surrey County. Make that in a form of a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tucker. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now ayes have it. Looking for a motion to adjourn? Motion by Commissioner Tucker to have a second.
Aye.
Second by Commissioner Harris. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.